Be a problem me sitting here. Okay. They want, rather maybe here so they could see my face. Does it sound?
Hello, hello, hello.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna grab it. Do you want to water a half?
Right.
All right, I'm gonna need to have this over there. It's off at six o'clock. Where's that? How's it sound? Better? Okay. It must have been that. I don't know. I don't know, because he's supposed to start it.
You just have right at it. Good evening. You might notice I'm talking on a microphone, but you can't hear me any better. So the microphones tonight are going to our offsite, whatever Mr. Freeman's here is doing, so this can be broadcast live. So if you can't hear, make sure you wave your hand when the board candidate starts speaking to make sure that you can hear everything. I want to thank you for being here tonight. My name is Derek Arrows. I'm honored to be superintendent here at Hamilton Heights. We appreciate you being here. This is kind of a combined meeting. This is our superintendent advisory group, so several new members of the superintendent advisory group are here. So if you're new, I'm not going to make you introduce yourself this meeting. The next meeting I will. Raise your hand and so thank you very much. Every year, in the beginning of the year, I ask the principals to give me a list of names of people who will serve on the superintendent advisory group. And I'm pretty specific about what kind of person I want on that group. I want people who will tell me what I need to hear, not necessarily what I want to hear. So that's a compliment. I appreciate you guys being here. Once you're here, even if you're not on the list, and you sign in, you're officially a member of the superintendent advisory group. So congratulations. If you showed up tonight just for kicks and wanted to see the board candidate form and you signed in, you're now officially a member of the superintendent advisory group. So congratulations. So thank you for being here. Those people who got the agenda, the next three meetings are scheduled. They're on the agenda. One of your jobs is between now and that November meeting is give me ideas for what else you need to hear about, what else you want to know about, specific topics. We've talked about special ed. We've talked about transportation. We've talked about testing. We've talked about our cafeteria program. It's usually pretty educational for you folks, and it's really educational for us to be able to put programs like that together to answer some of the questions you might have. So don't hesitate to send me an email and ask me what, and let me know what you want to hear the next time we're around. So my job tonight is to kind of kick off the process and make sure that you know a little bit about what we're about to delve into. So Jennifer is going to put a PowerPoint presentation up here. This is our school candidate form. And the very first slide that I put together is a very old slide. And that slide is actually from Board Policy in 1994. And that describes how Hamilton Heights School Board is elected. So I'm going to introduce these guys here in a second. They're members of our school board, as is Dr. Kavanaugh. You'll see a picture of Arnie Cooper. Keep Arnie in your thoughts and prayers. Arnie is recuperating. He had a pretty serious illness a couple of weeks ago, but he is quite resilient. And so I'm sure Arnie is on the mend and doing better. But keep, if you get a chance to send him a note or a card, I know he really appreciates that. But basically, we have a five-member board. Two are elected from White River Township, and you'll see this in a second. Doug is from White River Township, Doug O'Zolins. And Laura is from White River Township as those two members. And you'll see some information about that. We have two from White River, or Jackson Township. Kevin is from Jackson Township. And Julie is from Jackson Township. And then we have one at-large member. Each of those board members are elected when they're White River, White River, by just folks in White River Township, or Jackson and Jackson, just for members in Jackson Township. The at-large member is elected by both places. And when the school board put that together in about 1967, my guess is they felt that that would balance that. But there's also, the communities have changed a little bit, but the goal was to have a balanced school board representing both townships. The next slide shows, well, most of you already know, a map of Hamilton County. So the far northeast corner is White River Township, and then the far north central is Jackson Township. So that's what we're talking about. In this election, David and Gretchen are just White River Township, so only folks from White River Township can vote from them. Kevin, unless some type of something, he does something crazy in the next month or so, people are just voting for Kevin from Jackson Township. The next slide shows when these folks were elected and how this is working. So the people in white are what's up for reelection this year. And that is Dr. Kavanaugh. He was elected in January, he was elected in November of 16, but he started his term in January of 17. Laura was elected, and that was a different time. In those times, we were, she was actually elected in May at the primary of 2008 and started service in July of 2008. Since then, all school board elections are now done, and then November elections. So she actually, I think, got to serve an extra half-year as part of her work. Laura has done an amazing job as a school board member since 2008. And in my words, she's done an amazing job, and she should stay on the board for the next 30 years. However, she's had enough, and she's ready to pass on the battalion, the baton, and that'll go to either David or Gretchen. Kevin is running an opposed from Jackson Township, and you can see his term. Arnie is the at-large board member, Mr. Cooper, and he started in 2010, so he'll become our senior board member. And he is up for another election in 2019, or in 2020, 2022. Julie is in her, starting her, she'll be, she's finishing her second year on the board, starting her third year next year. And Doug is in his second term on the board. He was elected and started his term in 2015. So that's how this works. And so in two years, we'll have another board election and potentially have maybe some new board members. I hope that these guys all stay running and do this forever, because they've been a great board to work with. The next slide shows a little bit of how our website works. So we revamped our website this year, so this is just a screenshot of the website. If you go to our main website, under the administration, Jennifer, I don't know if you can put your finger over the hoverpad thinger and move that mouse around, but if she goes up to the administration side, which is that orange, that'll drop down, and that'll give you information on the school board. That'll tell you about all the school board and who they are, and kind of a biography of them. And then it also shows the school board meetings and the minutes of those meetings and all the information about the meeting. The next slide, also, when you drop down, you can also see about three-fourths of the way down, there's policy manual. So that's a lot of what drives what the school board does. The school board's main, has basically two main functions. And just as an aside, Gretchen and David both went through board orientation about three weeks ago. So when we do board orientation at Hamilton Heights, and this is my 16th year as a superintendent, I do board orientation before the election, so I can make sure to share the same information with board members while they're running. So one of the things we talked about was the policy manual. And when Jennifer hits that next button, you'll see what that policy manual looks like. Our policy manual is all online. There's actually 10 different categories, including bylaws, that go from administration to professional staff to property. And everything that the board approves goes in those, that policy manual. The next slide shows specifically under bylaws, kind of how the board is set up, the purpose of the board, the address, the board's authority, the philosophy of the board. And the next slide is actually an article from today's Indianapolis Star, and it talks a little bit about what boards, this is a pretty good article. The lady who wrote it is a lady named M.J. Slaby. She's done a lot of work here at Hamilton Heights. Sometimes we have to remember and remind M.J. that there are six public school corporations in Hamilton County. She sometimes just focuses on the Big Four of the South. But Peggy Georgie does a lot of public relations for us and talks to M.J. quite often and reminds her that the Hamilton part of Hamilton Heights is Hamilton County. So that's about all I have in terms of what the board does and who they are and how they operate. I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to start the board forum.
Hi. I don't have a handheld mic. I have a fancy one. So I want to welcome everyone tonight. My name's Jennifer Luce. I am the Hamilton Heights Platoon Teachers Association President, but I'm also the Data and Curriculum Integration Specialist here at Hamilton Heights. So we together, our CTA, decided to put on this forum so that everyone could be involved and know what the classes are.
School planning for school.
So I want to thank you for what this is. It's not a debate, first of all. So I don't worry about anyone having to yell at me or anything. Yeah. So if this forum is not a debate, there's no dialogue between the two of you. So they will probably want to know, they will just be responding to the questions that I ask, so that you can hear what I have to say. If you could, please hold applause till the end, so that everyone can get their time in to be able to talk and answer questions. Everyone will have equal time to answer the questions. David has two minutes to answer the question, and then Chelsea Clyler will be sitting there. They know to look to her if they're getting close on time. She's going to let them know that they have ten seconds remaining, and then it is time to stop. I pulled her to go back. We will rotate each person who will answer the questions. So we drew names earlier today, and Gretchen's name was chosen first, so that's why she's in the first position. So she will begin by giving the first opening statement, and then Adam will do his, and then Kevin will begin. Then the first actual question will go to Adam, and then Kevin, and then we'll be rotating like that. This will last about an hour from beginning to end, so when it gets close to seven o'clock, I will be watching the questions in the time and be ready to leave. My hope is that everyone, if there are other questions sent from them, that the candidates will be able to answer those, you know, making one-on-ones, even, you know, I can find a way to do it if you guys are ready. Like I said, we will, I've been driven maybe the past time, so that's where they're going in. And then we are streaming this live onto YouTube, but you may also re-watch it in time. On the website, there is a link if you go to HHS, the HHS dot org slash school board, it'll take you to the YouTube site or whatever you're going to go to. But that, then I'm going to sit over here. I'm trying to be loud enough, but if you cannot hear me, you know, you can hear the questions as well if they're in front of you. I'll be sitting right here, and here is the opening statement. So Gretchen, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to everyone who made this forum possible. I greatly appreciate the opportunity. So my name is Gretchen Pennington. I'm running for the White River Township seat. My decision for running for the school board isn't a decision I have made lightly. In fact, it's something I've been thinking about for quite some time. My children have been in the Hamilton Heights school system for 15 continuous years. They've been involved in a lot of activities, and because they've been involved in a lot of activities, so have I. I've been in the school a lot, being a classroom, in and out of the classroom, volunteer. I've been a coach. I've been a team mom. I've been on two boards, and I'm the unofficial Husky photographer at times as well. Over these years, I've developed a lot of positive relationships with people within the school and the community, many of whom have encouraged me to run for school board. But at that time, I'm a working mom with three young children. They were very active, and I didn't have the time. I think the school board makes many important decisions, and I'm not the type of person to commit to something unless I have the time to really dedicate to it that it deserves. So my youngest son is now a senior. He'll graduate in the spring, so I have the time. My reason for running for school board is quite simple. I just want to give back to a community that has blessed me and has given a lot of opportunities to my family and me. So when I look at what I can bring to the school board, a few important things. One, I grew up on a farm myself. My husband Ed and I bought a farm in White River intentionally so we could raise our kids in the country, and instill a lot of the values that come with growing on a farm, values like hard work, determination, and responsibility. I also believe my professional background, by being a Hamilton County Deputy Prosecuting Attorney for the past 22 years, gives me a neat set of skills that I can bring to the school board, and that will be an asset. Between my personal background and my professional experience, I believe I'm a strong candidate for the Hamilton Heights School Board. Thank you.
Adam?
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Good. My name's David Adam Scheller. I'm a 1999 graduate from Hamilton Heights Schools, and I married Amy in 2006. She is also a 2001 graduate of Hamilton Heights. I'm also a graduate of Purdue University in agricultural education in 2004. I really, we've got three daughters. Almost forgot. I have three daughters. I've got Annie, who's a fourth grader. I have Abby, who's a second grader. And I have Elena, who is a preschooler. She's three. And so they'll all be coming through the school within the next 14 years here. And so that's why I think that this is the right time for me to run. I will be involved with this school for the next 14 years. I'm a seventh-generation farmer. I've grown up in Hamilton Heights. This is my 40th year. I'm 40 years old. So I am committed to making Hamilton Heights the best it possibly can be. I'm a Husky, true and true. I don't know anything else other than to be a Husky. And so it's very, very dear to my heart. I'm a former teacher here, taught here for two years. I'm a former wrestling coach here. I'm a current Husky, Little Husky basketball coach here. And like I said, I've got three kids that'll be going through the school for the next 14 years. And this school is very, very important to me. It's been important to me for a long, long time, and it will be for the next few generations, probably. So I appreciate everybody coming out here tonight, and thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Kavanaugh. So I'm a school board member right now. My background, I grew up actually in Ohio, and then because of my employment in cornbreeding, I got to this community and was an employee at Beck's Hybrids for 27 years. I just recently changed positions and now have president of a genetic licensing business. So what brought me to this community was the strong foundation of Beck's Hybrids here in this community. And so this community is not unlike the community I grew up in. I actually grew up in a community where there were three small towns that consolidated over time, and so very much an agricultural community. So I'm very familiar with this type of a setting. So I have two boys that have been in the system and through the system. So my youngest son is a junior right now at Hamilton Heights. My wife and I have been very involved in the, in community functions over time. We've been very involved in, in school functions, coached a lot of basketball and soccer when my kids were much younger, and was very involved with that as well. So I've enjoyed the school board for the last four years. I like giving back to the community, and I also like investing in the future. And so I can't think of a better way to invest in the future than to invest in the kids. And so I'm excited tonight to see that in the audience, we have some Huskies, young Huskies in the audience tonight that are listening and participating in this forum. And I also want to thank the CTA and Jennifer for sponsoring this candidate's forum tonight. So thank you.
The first question will go to Adam. Adam, what motivates you to want to become a school board member?
Well, I have three reasons. Their names are Annie, Abby, and Elena. And there's nothing more important to a father than his children. And simply put, I want to see them to continue to be successful. I want them to continue to grow as humans. And I want to be an integral part in helping other people's children become the best versions of them that they can be. Huskies are, Huskies are a different kind of people. Huskies were there when my dad died in 2004. The Husky Strong, I mean, it's got brought up here recently, but Husky Strong was started back long before there was ever a hashtag. Husky Strong is dear to my heart because people in this community helped me get through with losing my dad. And, you know, people showed up to help to harvest the farm and to get people to jump on board like that. It makes me want to help them back. It makes me want to make this place even better than it is now. So that's why.
Kevin, what motivates you to want to become a school board member?
Yeah, so I really am focused on giving back to the community. And so when I look at my career, education has been a very big part of my career. And so I want to give back to the community, to the school corporation here. And so serving on the school board is a great way to do that. Certainly, with my two sons going through Hamilton Heights, that really presents them with a great opportunity for the future to be successful. So I really like that. And then I think I have a really nice skill set, have a lot of background in finance, a lot of background in business. And the school corporation is certainly a corporation that is one of the largest corporations in this area. And so having the skill set to be able to work with the finances and the overall corporation, I think, is an important asset that motivates me to help out.
Gretchen, what motivates you to want to become a school board member?
My kids have grown up through the Hamilton Heights school system. You know, they've grown into well-rounded young individuals. I'm very proud of the young individuals they are, who are given. And academically, thanks to Heights, they're solid and ready, ready for that next step for their future. So because Heights has been so wonderful to my family, what motivates me is to give back to the community. You know, my number one goal is for Hamilton Heights to provide the best education to all students in that safe learning environment, and to prepare them for their future, whatever their future looks like. I think it's very important that we build that solid foundation for them to be ready for that next chapter after they graduate. And really, that starts in elementary school. So when we focus in elementary on their core fundamentals, and as they progress and grow up, you know, they're getting exposed to new ideas. So by the time they get to high school, maybe they know what that interest is, or maybe they're still exploring, but if they know, they can follow that pathway so that they can be ready to step into adult life once they graduate, whether they end up doing a co-op, or whether they do the internships, or whether they do the dual credits. You know, Project Leadaway has been just fantastic for that as well, and STEM Program as well, to get kids ready for that next chapter. The other part is just to make sure that for Hamilton Heights, you know, you grow as a person at Heights, and there's a wide range of activities at Heights. But what's wonderful is our smaller community scale and size that allows you to be involved in a wide range of activities. You don't have to be limited to just one. So my goal is to keep the tradition alive with Hamilton Heights, to keep us always preparing them for the future, and always looking for ways to improve that. So I want Heights to continue that tradition and have that solid foundation on which all things can flourish.
Kevin, you'll be first on this one. Share your educational and professional background and how you think that experience can positively impact your work on the school board.
Okay. I mentioned that a little bit earlier, as it turns out. So I'm pretty familiar with school, because I was in school for a long time. So I have a PhD in plant breeding and genetics from Purdue University. So I had my undergrad at Iowa State University, and then went to Purdue for a master's in, again, agronomy and plant breeding, and then PhD in statistics and genetics. So, and then I came to this community in 1993. So I've been in this community for about 28 years now. And during that time, I was very involved with Beck's Hybrids. I was the director of research for 27 years, and then also on the leadership team. And that company has grown dramatically. I think it's grown 26 times bigger than when I started there in 1993. So there's been a lot of growth that happened there. And so because of that, I had a lot of opportunity to get involved in business relationships, business management, managing people. So that's, that gives me a really nice foundation in which I can help out the school board and participate in, whether it's, you know, working with teachers, whether it's working with administration, whether it's working with parents. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of different groups over time and learn how to, how to work together to obtain the goals that we need.
Gretchen, share your educational and professional background and how you think that experience can positively impact your work on the school board.
I graduated from Franklin College, and after graduating from there, I attended Indiana University School of Law. From there, I moved to Hamilton County. My first job here was as a Hamilton County Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. So I have been rooted in Hamilton County now for between 22 and 23 years. By being a deputy prosecuting attorney, I, it brings on a whole unique skill set. I represent the community in the courtroom, and to do that requires a lot of different skills going on at the same time. But the key thing that runs through it all, I'm basically a trained decision maker. I make important decisions every day based on facts. And what's, what is important about that is you gather all the information. You do not listen to just one side of the story. It's important you make these big decisions that you, you really seek out and make sure you get the whole picture before making that decision. So in my profession, I'm actually known for being extremely thorough and paying great attention to detail, which I think is very important. It's also important you cannot make decisions on impulse or emotion, and you certainly cannot make them on personal interest as well. So I always look to do what's best for everyone involved in my profession. So the skills that I take by being an attorney just are directly applicable to what you'd be doing on a school board as well. A lot of those responsibilities line up, and I never take those responsibilities lightly. And also by doing what I do, I work in collaboration with a lot of people with very differing interests and opinions. So I believe by being on the school board, I can bring that to the community.
Adam, share your educational and professional background and how you think that experience can positively impact your work on the school board.
Yeah, so like I mentioned before, I'm a graduate in 1999 here. I'm a 2004 graduate, Purdue University in Agricultural Education. My first job out of college was to teach here at Hamilton Heights. I was lucky enough to teach here for two years, and then I got an opportunity to, to sell farm equipment, for Reynolds Farm Equipment. And I was lucky enough to stay local here, so I actually would just go into, you know, Hamilton County, and I was, I was based in Fishers, and to sell farm equipment to, to local farmers and large property owners. From there, I opened my own insurance agency, kind of got, I got the unique opportunity to partner with Crop Insurance Specialists. They're the second-largest crop insurer in the state, and I get to run their division for farm, personal, and commercial. And so I think there's a lot of things to unpack there. Number one, my skill set inside of White River Township and the communication and the connections that I have, you know, it's 40 years in the making. You know, I'm loyal. I'm honest. Those are, those are traits that we want on the school board. And having taught at this school, I have a pretty good idea of how it runs. I have a pretty good idea of how the funding works. Now, I don't know everything, and I don't. I don't claim I know everything. But I have a good start base, and I'm definitely willing to learn the rest.
Gretchen, you'll have this one. In your view, what is the role of the Teachers Association in our district?
I guess the Teachers Association, I, and I'm not totally familiar with all that they do, but, you know, it's, I would look to it to be a collaborative effort where teachers communicate with one another, share ideas, talk about curriculum, curriculums, and how to approach educating our kids, keeping an overriding goal of being able to reach the kids and teach what needs to be taught. Also mentoring each other as needed, sharing ideas, and communicating with one another. It also fosters a good working environment. You know, our teams, when your teachers are happy and they work well together, that also benefits the children and the students and the education that goes on, which also benefits benefits the children and the students and the education that goes on, which also benefits the whole school climate and makes it a great community to work and live, or work in and live. Um, so, I think as far as, um, with teachers, it's important as a school board member that, that, that entity will be able to know that they could come and, and talk with, with me. As a school board member, I'm very open, I'm very willing to communicate with them. I want to hear their feedback, I value their opinions. Um, I'd like to hear any issues or concerns they have because I believe as a school board member, I would be that voice for them or, or help them address any issues that they've been having. So, um, and I think all of that is towards the betterment of our school and our kids and our community.
Adam, in your view, what is the role of the Teachers Association in our district?
Um, well, to, uh, since I taught here in 2004, 2005, 2006, I was a part of the Teachers Association for those two years. Chuck Reeves actually took me under his wing to recruit me to get in, you know, say, hey, you know, you need to be a part of this. And I had, I went, I had a few interactions with him, it wasn't a lot because, again, um, with being the ag teacher here, my, my plate was completely full. But the role for the Teachers Association is, is to, to help, to help the students, get the students what they need. Um, the Teachers Association does a, does a great job of keeping the lines of communication open. Um, they're not afraid to tell you. They're not afraid to tell you anything. They, they, if you go ask them, they will tell you what they need, and it's, and it's great. And, and the Teachers Association also, um, you know, I know, I know they fight hard for classroom, uh, numbers. They, you know, they want to keep that number of teacher to pupils down. Um, right now, I think we're at one to 21 or one to 20 right now, which is good, but it's not great. We need to work on it. Um, and so, the Teachers Association is there as a buffer to unite all of the teachers to be able to work towards a common goal. And, um, that's, that's my belief anyway, is, is they're there to unite together, to, to, to create, to get to a common goal so that, uh, for the betterment of our students.
Kevin, in your view, what is the role of the Teachers Association in our district?
Yeah, so, uh, I view the Teachers Association as, as a unified, unified voice for teachers. And so, uh, I, I know a guy that happens to be the superintendent here that says the most important thing we can do for our kids is, is make sure that there's a teacher in front of them. And so, uh, you know, the, the Teachers Association is very important to provide a unified voice. Uh, the, the teachers are, uh, a, a very, very significant cog to the school system. And so, uh, it's very important that they have a voice, that they're heard, uh, when they have concerns. Uh, it's a great way to, to, uh, to, to voice that opinion to administration and, and to others as well. And so, uh, you know, we're, we're very fortunate that, uh, here at Hamilton Heights, we have a excellent working relationship, uh, with the Teachers Association. And so, uh, at, at, uh, negotiation time, when we're talking about teacher salaries, I think the teachers feel that, that the administration is doing everything they can to maximize, uh, uh, raises and salary increases, uh, everything we can do, uh, to do that. Uh, there's certainly constraints to be able to do that, and, and the Teachers Association certainly, uh, works, uh, hand in hand to make sure that, that the teachers are, are represented and, and, uh, can, can, uh, not only, uh, have as large a salary increases as, as possible, uh, that we can do, but also, uh, are, are heard and make sure that, that if there's needs from the teachers, uh, that's a great avenue in which those needs can be heard.
Adam, you'll have this one. As a school board member, you are responsible for all of the children in our schools. How will you ensure that teachers are properly evaluated and held accountable so that all students receive the best education?
Could you repeat that one?
Sure. As a school board member, you are responsible for all of the children in our schools. How will you ensure that teachers are properly evaluated and held accountable so that all students receive the best education?
Well, I would say that, uh, the first thing that, you know, we need to do is, is we need to rely on our principals, and we need to rely on our administration. As a school board member, I can't be going around to every teacher and making sure that they're doing their job. Um, that's not my job as a school board member. My job is to help manage the direction of the corporation. Um, as far as, as far as evaluating teachers, um, I would hope that our principals would evaluate early and evaluate often. Don't, don't wait until the end of the year to evaluate a teacher, um, because honestly, the work, the, you know, they cannot improve. Um, I want to see, you know, a couple of evaluations at the beginning of the year, that would make sense to me. That's what I appreciated as a teacher. Show me where I can get better, um, because I know I'm not the best. Um, I can always be better. And so, to get those, uh, evaluations upfront first, um, to, to help correct maybe some of the things that, that they're not doing right or, or they're struggling with, uh, to open lines of communication there, that is always the best way, is to attack, attack any kind of a problem from the front. So, that's what I would do.
Kevin, as a school board member, you are responsible for all of the children in our schools. How will you ensure that teachers are properly evaluated and held accountable so that all students receive the best education?
Yeah, so this is a, an area of emphasis for me, and, uh, I think the school board members and, and Dr. O would know this, uh, over time, I have, uh, really pushed, uh, the evaluation process. So, uh, the way the evaluation process works is, is the principals go into the classroom and they evaluate, and there's a long evaluation, there's a short evaluation, uh, timeframe. They're evaluated multiple times over the school year, uh, to, to see if, uh, if there's needs, if there's changes needed, uh, that those, uh, changes are made. Uh, and then at the end of the year, there's a score given. And so, uh, there's, there's four different levels, and, uh, then there's some, some merit-based pay based on, uh, the level of achievement that they have. And so, uh, you know, I, I, I take this very seriously and, and, uh, really encourage our principals to, uh, first of all, evaluate very thoroughly. And if, if a teacher's, uh, simply not getting the job done, it, the, teachers in general are, are phenomenal here at Hamilton Heights. The culture here is absolutely phenomenal. But sometimes there's a teacher who maybe is, is a new teacher, who just, uh, isn't, isn't clicking or doesn't have enough experience in the classroom, and so, uh, those people, uh, those, those teachers need some help. And so, from my perspective, uh, you know, getting an evaluation that, that says needs improvement, which is one of the categories, uh, that's not the end of the world, is what that does is, to me, is motivates that teacher. If they're truly interested in teaching our kids here at Hamilton Heights, it motivates that teacher to do a great job and to move that score higher over time. And we have a lot of resources, uh, to be able to, uh, get that teacher, uh, help to be able to, to make suggestions so that they can be successful in the classroom. And so, uh, as I mentioned earlier, teaching, that, our teachers are the most important things we can put in front of our kids, and it's really important that we get high-quality teachers and then evaluate them fairly so that we can motivate them to be successful.
Gretchen?
As a school board member, you are responsible for all of the children in our schools. How will you ensure that teachers are properly evaluated and held accountable so that all students receive the best education?
Uh, in my opinion, evaluations are very important. Um, I think everyone should be evaluated at all levels, um, of, regardless of what your position is. It pushes us to make a strive to improve on, um, on our abilities. So, but evaluation shouldn't be viewed as a negative thing. Um, really, it allows an opportunity for feedback on what you're doing well, but also what areas you need improvement on. So, uh, again, you know, perhaps if you're doing really well in an area, then you can share that with someone else who isn't doing as well in that area, and that can fuel, um, a better learning environment for kids or more effective teaching with the kids. So, as educators, I'm sure it's, you're always looking for ways to improve, and you have to adjust your teaching with, with the way the trends and the demands are right now, especially with technology and everything. So, it allows us to be more effective, and it also allows us to, by improving our teaching, to prepare our kids better for our future. So, um, you know, we, in situations where they, where they're evaluated and if they are on the low end and they do need improvement, I don't, maybe it's an opportunity to allow peer mentoring or allows a teacher to go into someone else's classroom and observe and learn from that so they can carry that over into their classroom. Because as teachers, they're wonderful people, and they want to do well by the students as well. So, the bottom line is really for evaluations, we should always listen and learn from each other. We should always look for ways to improve and adjust and value the feedback, and in the end, it all makes us better. So, and as a school board member, you know, our role would be to evaluate the superintendent, and, and to do that, you know, would be important for, to get input from teachers and parents, students and all that, because, like I said, evaluation should be at every level. So, um, to, to know what everyone's opinion is on, on how the, how the superintendent is about, because I'm sure he would want to improve and to receive the best information.
Aside from the pandemic, what do you see as current, as the current challenges facing public education in Indiana?
Well, that's pretty easy. Funding is always a challenge, right? So, uh, so, I'll, I'll start out there with, with funding. And so, you know, Hamilton Heights and, and really all school districts have two different funds, uh, operations fund and the educational fund. And so, uh, the state house is the one that determines, uh, the funding from the educational, uh, perspective. And so, uh, Jennifer's got on a red shirt today because, uh, uh, that's, uh, red for Ed where, uh, she goes down to the state house and lobbies on behalf of the teachers to, uh, try to get some additional funding. And that's very, very important, uh, because when you look at a teaching profession, it, in my opinion, is, is grossly underfunded. And so, uh, those are things that we, that we need to work on there. So, so funding on the, on the, from the educational perspective is, is certainly one of those, uh, challenges that we have. Uh, the, other challenges that we have, uh, that I think about are, are mental health. And so, mental health is an, an area that, uh, is changing all the time, and so, uh, we certainly have challenges, uh, in a school district. And, and one of the things that I learned when I, uh, became a board member four years ago was that it's not just about teaching a kid reading, writing, and arithmetic. It's much more complex than that. Uh, this is actually raising a community here. And so, it's the community well-being, not just education, but also, uh, mental health, uh, making sure that our kids feel safe. And so, all those things roll into the school system. And so, that's an area that I think we need to continue to work on, uh, to be successful and to, and to make sure that, that, uh, we're raising, uh, great kids that'll have, be great citizens as we move into the future.
Gretchen, aside from the pandemic, what do you see as the current challenges facing public education in Indiana?
I always view safety as, and, as an ongoing challenge. Um, students and faculty deserve to be in a safe, a safe environment in which they can grow and thrive, and, and safety is something that I take personal interest, especially given what I do for a living. Um, so, to me, what safety is more, that is a much broader definition. And typically, we think of safety as active shooter, and obviously, that's very critically important, and we have the student resource officers, um, we have the safety specialists in the committees to address that, we do the adult's trainings to address that. But it goes beyond just that. Um, safety is, is drugs, having drug-free schools and the crime prevention that goes along with it. But bullying is always a concern as well. You know, the school has addressed, um, the see something, say something, the tip line that's available. We've established assistance programs that can focus on, on kids, to teach one, to lead one, and those early intervention programs for adverse kids so that they can hopefully stay on track. These programs are just vital to the, to the safety, overall safety of our, of our children and, um, for, for kids that are having personal struggles. You know, there are counselors, there's the teachers to address those needs. So, safety is always a big concern for myself. The other, um, challenge I view is, you know, keeping up with the trends and the demands and the technology in the workforce. You know, we need to equip our teachers with everything they need so that they can teach our kids to be ready for their, their future, to, so that when they graduate from Heights, they're, they're ready to start in the workforce or in, um, vocational or, um, go into college. So, you know, Project Leadaway and the STEM programs are just fantastic, and, and those are certainly challenges that we need to stay on top of and, and keep that in the parameters of the funding that we have available to us.
Adam, aside from the pandemic, what do you see as the current challenges facing public education in Indiana?
Well, I'm going to agree with both of them. I think, um, school funding, obviously, is, is a big one. Um, we need to make sure that we are getting maximum efficiency out of our funding dollars. Um, we need to make sure that, you know, our students are, are getting into those classes where, where we can maximize funding for electives and things like that. Um, I also believe that safety, I mean, safety is number one importance of all, over everything else, just because, um, it's our job as a school corporation to bring those kids back home safely every day, um, for 12 years. And so, um, you know, right now, we've got an issue with traffic. Um, people want to bring their kids to school, and we've had two crashes in front of 19. Um, we need to get with the state and get that addressed immediately. Nobody needs to die. Um, so that, that would be, that would be a very pressing issue for me. Um, again, uh, another pressing issue is communication with White River Township. Um, we do a very good job of emailing out. I mean, I get a different email every day or a text message, um, which is awesome. Um, but I didn't get those until I had kids in school. And, um, and I didn't get that while I was, you know, there's that gap. There's always these gaps. There's gaps with, you know, before you have kids, there's gaps after you have kids. And so, um, you know, one of the things that I want to do is, is I would like to create an advisory committee for the White River Township people so that we can get information to those people that may not have, um, an email account or may not have internet access, um, so that we can filter down communications from, from, you know, from any means necessary because I've, there's definitely a group of people out there that don't know what's going on, and that's not okay.
What are two to three strengths that our school corporation can be proud of, and what are two to three needs that should be priorities for our school corporation?
What are two to three strengths that our school corporation can be proud of, and what are two to three needs that should be priorities for our school corporation?
I, I think one of the, some of the strengths within our corporation are, um, we do really well in providing a wide range of curriculum, given our small size, um, you know, with a funding challenge as well. The kids are given a, a lot of opportunities in a lot of different, um, areas so that when they do graduate, they'll be prepared for, if they want to go right into the workforce and the skills or trades, if they want to do vacation, if they want to go on to college or join the military. So, I think it's a strength that, that our teachers and our administrators really have done a fantastic job on, on addressing the needs and the curriculum so that our kids, our children can, um, graduate from Heights with a strong academic foundation and hopefully vision of what they want to do in the past. Um, I also think that there's a great, um, school climate. I think we're, we're a, a strong community. Um, we're very proud. You know, when you look at when we're in crisis and we have things that happen within the community, the outpouring is, is unbelievable, and that speaks volumes of the quality of people in our community and that we care. Um, we're Husky Strong. Another strength would be, is, um, you know, how, um, the administration and, I, I would use COVID as an example because it seems to be a classic example so much, but, you know, the uncharted territory and the uncertainty that it's gone, of the ever-changingness of it, you know, the response that they've had to try and keep people informed, known full well, that we still don't know how it's going to end or when it's going to end, and communication has been wonderful. And it's been a challenge to keep up that morale and with the teachers and with the students as well. So, that needs to be a priority to keep that up.
And what are two to three strengths that our school corporation can be proud of, and what are two to three needs that should be priorities for our school corporation?
Um, small school field, man, I love it. I know other people do too, and they are trying to get into this. You know, we've got a record number of transfer students to, that want to come to Hamilton Heights because they want to be here. And the small school field, everybody wants that. Um, another great thing is obviously the facilities. I mean, they are second to none, um, now in the state of Indiana. I mean, I couldn't be more proud of that. Um, we need to keep learning by doing, and that, that follows the STEM program, that follows our agricultural education program where we work with our hands to learn. Um, some of my best teaching was letting my students teach the soils class because it not only reinforced, um, the, the students who already knew it, but those freshmen who were learning from those seniors never forgot it. seniors never forgot it, ever. You retain ninety percent of what you teach. And so that's some of our some of our needs that we need. Mental health, you know, I'm, I think we have somewhere between five hundred and seven hundred kids per guidance counselor. And so that's a lot to identify any kind of mental health issue. And so any kind of program where we can educate parents or educate other students on noticing a problem. I know we have the the tip line, but continue to educate us to notice problems with our children. That that's always good. Technology, there is kind, you know, I wish we would have had as much as we had now. I love the fact that my kids are bringing on iPads. If there's an issue now, we're ready. You know, I continue to step up that technology. And I think that'll be great.
Kevin? What are two to three strengths that our school corporation can be proud of? And what are two to three needs that should be priorities for the school?
Yeah, I can come up with a pretty long list of of things to be proud of here at at Hamilton Heights. I mean, we have tremendous culture here at Hamilton Heights. You know, our teachers are very caring here at Hamilton Heights. During the the pandemic and when school was out, I had my assistant has twin boys. And so I had a teacher that zoomed them on their birthday to make sure that they kind of felt the love when they couldn't come to school last March. And so, you know, that's just a small example of of the things that happened here at Hamilton Heights. So so our passionate culture is really important. The fact that our kids are people, they're not a number, which is a lot different than when you go south of where we live. So our our teachers know our kids very, very well. That's very important. Project Vision was a sixty million dollar effort to really get our schools in in perfect condition. And and the facilities are incredible there. We're a very fiscally sound district. I mentioned earlier that we need more funding in the education side, but on the operations side, previous school boards have done a really good job to make sure that that we're a very, very sound school board system here. Adaptability is great for our our teachers. So when when COVID hit last March, our teachers just just adapted and kept teaching, which is so very important. Things to work on. So from my perspective, we need to continue to to raise test scores. So I'm never happy with our test scores. I always want to improve. I want to get better. I want to challenge. I want to continue to 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 push, to make sure that our kids are going to be prepared for the future. And what's interesting is it's not the same as what it was ten years ago or twenty years ago. Education continues to adapt and change. And we have to be on the forefront of that to make sure that that our kids can do a great job there. Communication throughout the the district is also really important. We need to continue to communicate to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing here at Hamilton Heights.
So it's about six fifty-two. So what we're going to do now is we're going to have our closing statements. Adam, you will do yours first, and then Kevin, and then Gretchen. So Adam, go ahead.
Well, again, I'm just going to reiterate that I graduated from here. I went to elementary school in this building. I was a teacher. I'm a coach. I was a coach. And now I'm a parent. And my family has been in this area since eighteen sixty-five. So I'm not going anywhere. My daughters are fourth grade, second grade, and preschool. So over the next fourteen years, I'm going to be integrally, I'm going to be integrally working with the school corporation in one way or the other. And I'd rather be at the front heading and leading than to than any than any other way. So again, I'm running for White River Township School Board.
Jennifer, first of all, thank you very much for hosting this today. And this has been really a lot of fun and and hopefully a good learning experience. When I think about running for school board, as I mentioned earlier, it's an opportunity for me to give back to the community. I like to affect the future. And I can't think of a better way to affect the future than to affect kids' education. Because that affects the future, you know, not just for one generation, but future generations. And and I like to quote a book, one of my favorite books is called Good to Great, Jim Collins. It's a business book. And and that good to great concept, the school boards heard me talk about it, Dr. Irwood's heard me talk about it. The concept is, we have a really good district here. Hamilton Heights School Corporation is really, really good. And so when you have a good school district, sometimes you can get complacent. You can say, yeah, we're pretty darn good. You know, we're, we don't have to worry about things. We're in, we're in a great shape. And so it takes a lot of fortitude to move from being a good district to a great district. And that's where I really spend my time is is encouragement to the administration, working really hard to encourage to get not just good, but we need to get great for our kids. And so that's a tough transition to move from good to great. But that's what we're striving for here at Hamilton Heights.
First of all, thank you again for hosting this forum tonight. And thank you to everyone who's attended. So I want to leave you with just a few important things to remember about me personally. So I'm a proud mother of three children. My kids were born and raised in Hamilton Heights schools and in Hamilton Heights community. My husband, Ed, is a lifelong resident here, and he graduated from Hamilton Heights as well. I moved here right after law school. I've been rooted in Hamilton Heights community now for twenty, nearly twenty-two years. Ed and I intentionally bought our farm in White River so we can raise our kids in the country, and intentionally so we can stay within the Hamilton Heights school district. So Hamilton Heights has been a huge part of my life. So my love and commitment for Hamilton Heights does not and will not end when my son, youngest son graduates this spring. Serving as a member of the school board will be a great opportunity for me to give back to a community again that's given so much to me. And I have the time now to do that. With my farming roots combined with my twenty-two years of experience as as an attorney that has been dedicated to public service, I will be an asset to the school board. I would be the only member on the school board that has that background and experience. In my profession, every decision I make is based on fact, and it's not on personal interest. So I'm committed to bringing that same professional rigor to the school board. I'm an open-minded, I'm a very approachable person. I promise I will always listen to you. I will work hard to represent you well. And I promise I will always make decisions in the best interest of our students, our teachers, and our community. I've dedicated a lot of time to Heights. I've dedicated my entire professional career to public service. And so becoming a school board member is just a natural fit for me. So I would love your support and your vote on before November third. Thank you.
So thank you very much for coming tonight. Superintendent Advisory Group members, don't forget, I you got the agenda for the upcoming meetings. If there's a topic you'd like to discuss going forward, let me know and we can put that on the agenda. I want to thank our current school board members and a shout out to Mr. Cooper, who I think is watching online, but Doug Osowens and and my high school English teacher, Julie Davis, and Laura Reuter for for being here tonight and supporting what we do on a daily basis here at school. I really appreciate Adam and Gretchen taking the time. I know there's a lot of preparation that they put in to get ready for this and the conversation to have in front of not only you people that are in the room, but about, we think, fifty people at least online watching it live now, and then whoever watches it after this. So we appreciate that. And I don't do this often, but I am going to endorse a candidate. I'm going to vote for Dr. Kavanaugh, since the Jackson Township. But I really appreciate Kevin kind of, Dr. Kavanaugh kind of got bullied into this because he was running unopposed. But I felt it was a great opportunity for for the community to kind of see potential board members, but a sitting board member. And we really have a strong school board here now. And I really appreciate Dr. Kavanaugh letting me twist his arm a little bit to sit up here. And here's some of the things that that he's encouraged us to do and that that pushing he talks about. So thank you very much for being here tonight. Have a great evening. And we'll see those of you that are going to come back in in November at the next Superintendent Advisor Group.